All right, I'm ready.
Good evening, welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, January 23rd, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm pleased to warmly welcome Boy Scout Troop 157, who's here this evening. They're working on their citizen badge, and I'm sorry we're a couple of minutes late. They were grilling us with awesome questions that thankfully, we had answers to most of them. So, we appreciate you being here. They're going to join us to start the Pledge of Allegiance. So, come on up, gentlemen. You guys look great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baker is out of town and will not be here this evening. Next on our agenda is the approval of several sets of minutes. I'll ask for separate motions. Is there a motion to approve the January 9th public hearing minutes?
So moved. I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the January 16th work session minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. This evening, we have one presentation. I am pleased to recognize the proclamation to recognize African American History Month, February 2018. And I'll recognize Councilmember Olem to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing African American History Month, February 2018. Each year throughout the month of February, events are planned nationwide honoring the history and impact of African Americans. African American History Month began as part of an initiative by writer and educator, Dr. Carter Woodson, to raise awareness of African Americans' contribution to civilization. The event was first celebrated in 1926 during a week in February that included the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Since 1976, every American president has proclaimed February is African American History Month. Today, other countries such as Canada and the United Kingdom have also devoted an entire month to celebrating Black History. As the Town of Herndon celebrates African American History Month, we honor those who have played a critical role in the creation of our nation through their labor, leadership, patriotism, intellect, artistic endeavors, and acclaim the sacrifice, strength, and accomplishments in unyielding spirit of our nation's great civil rights leaders. These heroes who fought for and protected equal rights include Frederick Douglass, Webb Dubois, Martin Luther King Jr., and Fannie Lou Hamer. Therefore, the mayor and the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of February 2018 as African American History Month in the Town of Herndon to emphasize the importance of remembering the contributions and accomplishments of African Americans throughout the history of our nation. Furthermore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon hereby remember the strength, courage, and resulting struggles of African Americans who helped build our nation and furthered the call for social justice. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from the council? Ms. Olem?
Yes. My favorite African American when I was growing up, when I was the age of the Boy Scouts here, was when we talked about Ms. Parks, who didn't want to give up her seat on the bus in Alabama. Because I grew up in Alabama, so we talked about her quite a bit. And in the Town of Herndon, I remember in 2004, when we had our very first African American elected to the Town Council. And that was not only a member of the community, but he had been a member of our police force for many years. And that was Captain Darrell Smith. And then he went on to be the Chief of Police in Percerville. And just an individual like that, just living through the turmoil times of the 60s. And there was evidently a terrible riot here in Herndon. I didn't live here at the time, a race riot. And, you know, he lived through that. But he's one of the most positive individuals I've ever met, and I consider him a friend. So, I'm very pleased that we do this as the Town Council every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs?
Just briefly like to say how proud I am that as a town, we recognize African American History Month and all of the contributions that, well, as many of the contributions as we can, of the African American community to our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Echoing my fellow council members, I think it's an important thing that we do every year to recognize the contributions that many Americans have made to the greatness of this nation. And I do look forward to a day when we don't have to have these proclamations anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. McKenna?
I'd like to echo everything said. And Ms. Cunningham, I totally agree with that. I grew up in a, I had a, my parents had a newspaper shop and was a focal point in town. And many people came from outside of town, one of them being Plainfield, New Jersey, which is a large African American community. And heroes for me were people like Seth Hicks and Fred Ferguson and a man named Bernie Rorrell. Some of you might not recognize his name, but he used to come in my dad's store every day by the Aquarian. He had dreadlocks, an amazing, amazing man. And growing up, he was just Uncle Bernie to me. And then as I got older, I realized he was actually the keyboardist for Parliament Funkadelic. He wrote the song Flashlight. Yeah, it was pretty crazy. Yeah, so Uncle Bernie.
Mr. McKenna knows everybody. It's kind of creepy.
But what was an amazing thing was the bond we had together. When I graduated college in 1996, I asked him if he can come down to West Virginia to see me graduate. He said, absolutely, but you got to come see me get inducted in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And that was the first year they did it in Cleveland. And Prince inducted him, which was beyond, it just blew my mind as a 23-year-old kid. And then when my father passed away, he was playing in the Hamilton in Washington DC. He called me up on stage and for two minutes talked about how my dad influenced his life. And then he recently passed away two years ago from lung cancer. And I was with her son Basil and, excuse me, his son Basil and his wife Judy. And it's the work of men like that and seeing the day-to-day progress that we're making. It's not a perfect place, but it's a great place where a man with purple dreads can be friends with a kid who doesn't understand funk music until he meets his hero. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to recognize that Herndon is a very diverse community. We're proud of that. In my own little 15-townhouse development, we have at least five different cultures involved and more languages than that within the 15 townhouses. So, we appreciate the contributions of everyone in Herndon, and Herndon is a place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I concur with my colleagues. You know, I grew up, first 20, almost 24 years of my life in Montgomery, Alabama, which everyone in this room knows was the center of a lot of the civil rights movement. And I grew up around a lot of things that I'm glad are changing. I have really enjoyed being in Herndon. And Herndon is, I've lived here almost as long as I lived in Montgomery, Alabama. So, I am grateful for the place that we call home where everyone is welcome. I'm so pleased that Dorian and Leah are here to accept this because I met them several years ago. They found me on Twitter, which was like the first person that ever found me on Twitter. I was so excited. But they've started a church here in the town. And Dorian especially has been involved in a pastors group that I am fortunate enough to be invited to join for their lunch meetings once a month. And I've learned so much from all of them. And in particular, over the last several months, the conversations we've had from Dorian. So, I was thrilled that you're able to come and accept the proclamation and welcome you forward for the presentation. And I'd like to invite the entire diocese to come forward. And anyone in the audience who would like to come forward, we welcome you.
Well, first I'd like to say we're very humbled and honored to be here, to even be a part of this, and to accept on the behalf of the Town of Herndon. This is truly an honor for myself and my wife. We're new to Herndon, but one thing that we've learned over the past three years now is this is a place where people love people, and we fit right in with that. So, we're excited about this. I know personally, as a father of two teenagers, and this time that I would not be able to have the opportunities that I have had it not been for people before me like my grandfather, who is actually, my grandfather is probably, to me like your person, the Parliament Funkadelic person. To me, my grandfather is one who, he lived in Virginia in Hanover County. And at a seventh grade education, he was able to go away, work in a taxi cab company in New York, save up enough money, come back to Hanover County, Virginia, and purchase several acres of land. To me, to this day, I'm so impacted by that. And I stand here knowing that it's because of people like him and other people who have allowed me to have the opportunity. So, we do accept this proclamation. And I also agree, Ms. Cunningham, I look forward to the day where we won't need these proclamations. But we're so glad to be a part of this community and look forward to contributing more. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to comments portion of the agenda. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last public hearing, I suggested that the council might want to reconsider some portions of the town's residential parking ordinance to ease the process for extending a residential area. This was in response to our experience managing the situation in the old Drainsville Hunt Club neighborhood. Working with the town attorney, I proposed a change to the process at last week's work session. With the council's concurrence, the mayor asked staff to draft the changes to the ordinance for council consideration. This is described in the minutes of January 16th work session, which we just approved a few minutes ago. These minutes should be available on the town's website in the near future. The changes are scheduled to be considered at the work session on February 6th and the following public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Just a couple of things. The Herndon Village Network is having a fundraiser for coffee, tea, and sweets. In case you're wondering what that is, that is an organization that helps seniors in town live their day-to-day lives. You know, sometimes they can't drive to a doctor and things like that, and Herndon Village Network picks up that slack. But it's a fundraiser for coffee, tea, and sweets on Sunday, February 11th, 2:30 to 4:00. Full disclosure, I'm a board member, so this is a little tooting the horn there. So, it's at Art Space in Herndon, 750 Center Street. It's $20 per person. If you want tickets or more information, you can email herndonvillageneetworkinfo@gmail.com. The Herndon Youth Advisory Council next meeting is February 8th at the Herndon Police Department. We have one of our members in the audience tonight.
Hi, Meredith.
And then the Fairfax County Citizens Corps Council will reconvene this year. The meeting is going to be at the Government Center on the Drainsville Representative. That'll be at 6:45 on Thursday. Any concerns regarding emergency preparedness and natural disaster preparedness, certainly let me know, and I can pass those on as a representative. And then finally, had a meeting today, and I just want to thank the mayor for reaching out with me to a couple of citizens regarding some of their concerns. So, taking time out of your schedule, truly appreciate it. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I wanted to extend a warm thank you to Art Space Herndon. I attended the opening reception for Edged and Skinned, which was a very unusual art exhibit this past Saturday. I was disappointed not to see a single board member there, but it was a wonderful exhibit by a group of tattoo artists. And if you haven't been by Art Space Herndon to check out some of their displays, please stop by. Their shows change every month. The arts thrive in the Town of Herndon. If you haven't been over to Next Stop Theater, my understanding is the current play is hilarious. So, please take a moment to support the local arts here in town.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
To follow up on Councilmember Cunningham's remarks, I wanted to emphasize that Art Space Herndon has a really fun activity every Saturday for the next few months. There's a pop-up tea shop that has baked goods, gluten-free and non-gluten-free and all that good stuff. And they are playing board games from 11 to 4 every Saturday. And I went a couple of weeks ago. It was so much fun. I played Uno with a couple of, well, with some political people. It was really interesting.
But it was fierce. Stakes were high.
Yes. So, I recommend that you go. Saturday is 11 to 4. They're also doing yoga at Art Space. And I encourage you, if you're interested, to go online at www.herndonarts.org. Or it might be artsherndon.org. I think it's Herndon Arts. The tattoo show that Councilmember Cunningham went to was one of their best-attended events ever. And I think people are pretty emboldened by that. The next show that's opening is the Fine Art Photography Competition. And I have to say, that is usually amazing. So, I highly recommend you go to that one. It opens on February 13th.
Thank you, Ms. Olem.
Thank you. I went by Art Space a couple of weeks ago, and I did see this, the same exhibit. But Elaine Curtis, who'd recently retired from our Dulles, and it used to be the Herndon Chamber of Commerce, and now it's the Dulles Area Chamber of Commerce, she's written a book called Chamber Tales. So, if you haven't lived in Herndon very long and you want to read up on some history, she got here two years, she took that position two years after I moved here. And it's been real interesting reading because I was keeping up with things about all of the things that were going in Herndon, like we were one of the first places to get the fiber optics. And that's huge for our community. And our chamber helped us push that through. So, it's got a lot of interesting tidbits that you might want to read. Also, Ms. Friedrich, Councilmember Friedrich mentioned yoga. And I saw the cutest story Sunday on my favorite show, Sunday Morning. And there's now this new craze going on around the country called Goat Yoga. So, you might want to check it out. People actually doing yoga with goats in the room. They started it out as some type of therapy for people that were having issues dealing, just hanging out with goats. And then it morphed into the goat yoga. But the last thing, if you have not been to the Smithsonian's National Museum of African American History and Culture, I was fortunate enough to go there right after it opened. My mom was up from Alabama and another friend of mine. So, we went in, I guess it was November 16. And it was absolutely awesome. But we were only there for a couple of hours, so we only saw about one floor because it was packed. But my favorite thing was going through all the pop culture, you know, where Prince was and the drifters and the costumes for the Supremes and so forth. So, that might be a good thing to plan during the month of February, if you can get in the door. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't planning to mention this, but a friend of mine on the last snow day got on for the same-day tickets, got tickets for that museum, and was there at 10:00 AM and walked right in. So, there's your pro tip from the diocese here. Snow day, try to get in the African American History Museum. It worked for a friend of mine, because it's really hard otherwise. Thank you for that. I wanted to let you guys know that the Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Night is coming up. It's on April 15th this year. It's a Sunday. I just confirmed last night that my friend Tommy McFly from 94.7, The Tommy Show, is going to be our guest speaker. So, he's a lot of fun. So, I hope to see a lot of you there. We sent out letters yesterday to area clubs, organizations, schools, and businesses requesting nominations for the three big awards, Outstanding Volunteers, Distinguished Service, and Distinguished Corporate Service Award. But anyone who has given more than 100 hours of service to the town or an organization that benefits the town in the past year is eligible. You can fill out the nomination form and come and get a free gift. And you don't have to be an adult Boy Scout. So, if you've done a lot of service projects, add up your hours, you might be able to come. There's good food, and we don't talk a whole lot. So, it's a really nice evening to come. And Tommy McFly is going to be there. So, you know it's going to be fun. So, we hope to see you there. There's more information on the town's website, or you can contact any one of us, and we can direct you in the right place for more information. But it's April 15th. Give us something to be happy about on April 15th. That's the plan. The next portion of the agenda is comments from the audience, and we're starting off this evening. I'd like to recognize Toni Reinhardt, who is the owner and administrator for Comfort Keepers and a community leader for Dementia Friendly America. She's going to give us a brief update on the Dementia Friendly America project and how Herndon is becoming a part of that. So, got about five or six minutes for you. So, glad you're here.
I know. I wrote it down so that I don't go too far. Okay. So, I'm not sure where to look because there's so many people. I'm just going to start. It's estimated that by 2025, over 7.1 million people will be affected by Alzheimer's or other dementias. 60%, more than 60% of those people live in their own homes. They're not in assisted living or in memory care. They're in the community. And one in seven of those people live alone. So, if you don't know somebody now that has dementia, probably in the near future, you will. What we need to know is how can we best, oh, I'm sorry. I just think that my voice isn't, you know, enough to carry.
We can hear you, but we want to make sure you can be heard on television as well.
Oh, on television. I broke it. I took a mini metal. I'm fine, really. So, what we look, what we're looking at is how can we best support these people? Dementia Friendly America was set up to create communities that are accessible to those living with dementia and their care partners. We want to raise awareness for people living with dementia, and we want to create a community where they feel understood. Dementia Friendly Herndon will be the first community in the Commonwealth of Virginia to be dementia-friendly. We're working with the team at the state level to create a pilot city here in Herndon that we're hoping to replicate throughout the state of Virginia. Our goals with Dementia Friendly are to increase awareness within the community about those living with dementia. It's, I've worked in this industry 16 years, and still, almost every day, someone will come to me and say, someone that they love just died, and now they realize that they had dementia. So, those of us that work in the industry, sometimes we don't realize that people out there don't know what's going on. So, what we're trying to do is reach out to all sectors of the community, from police and emergency to restaurants and grocery stores. We're starting actually with the faith community. We would love to talk to you all. What we're doing is public educations, workshops, and seminars. We would like to speak to people. We can, for instance, go into a restaurant and help them understand where to seat someone with dementia, how to help them with the ordering process, how to make it more comfortable for them and their families and their care partners. There is a project in Boston called Purple Table that's doing just this. So, on our website, we'll list those restaurants that we've helped so that a family can get on the web and they can see what restaurants in Herndon have already been dementia-friendly and dementia-aware. We put together a team of professionals. Nicole is with me here. We've been trained. We're certified dementia practitioners. We have had our training. We have our communications projects done. We're ready to go out into the community. I want to show you our website. This is the first thing I did was get the website built because I thought this would be really important. Ta-da. Our website is DFAherndon.org. So, anybody can get on here. You can get resources. You can sign up for a workshop. We on our team are ready to go. Look at DFAherndon.org. I didn't have time because you only gave me five minutes, but there's a video here. Marge said she's seen it. And I have to tell you, this is one of the most moving videos I've ever seen. It takes three minutes to watch, but this is a woman showing you what it is like to live with dementia and go through a typical day. And it also shows you how easy it is for the rest of us to just do some really minor things to make their lives easier. We just need to be aware. So, what I'm hoping is that you will all view the video. You all remember Dementia Friendly Herndon and what we're trying to do here in this community. You will spread the word. We're ready to speak. We're ready to do workshops. We're ready to help people really make, those people with dementia and their care partners feel more included and more a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's exciting. Definitely. Are we watching the video or we're not watching the video?
I thought you didn't have time. You only gave me five minutes, so I'm trusting you all.
Okay. Make sure you watch the video. I definitely will.
I've got it queued up. Sorry. I've got it queued up. I'm ready to watch it after.
Yeah, we're very excited. We have a brochure here that Ms. Reinhardt brought us, and we're looking forward to seeing where this takes us. Thank you for choosing Herndon. We're excited. So, as I mentioned, this is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for any item that's not one of our public hearing items. So, if you have comments on our, any general item or anything else that you would like to bring to the attention of the council, now's the time to do that. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light comes on, please try and wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item this evening? Yes, ma'am. I was like, is she coming this way or is she bolting? Which way is it going? All right. Come on down. I know. We're going to have to separate you two. It's getting rowdy back there. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Bessie Denton. I live at 496 Virginia Avenue in Herndon. I would like to say that I know that the Black History, the African American History, what they call it now, was part of the agenda. But I'm going to give you a little bit of history about that, too. It was one week in February when it was originally done. And we only had it for one week, yeah, before the '76 thing came about. Also, I'm going to give you a little tidbit of information about getting into that African American Museum. I found a secret.
Oh.
If you're retired, active-duty military, retired or active law enforcement, you just don't even have to have a ticket. Walk up to the lady that gets the tickets. Show her your credentials and have a nice day.
You've already made one person happy in the audience. I didn't know that.
So, that's two tidbits of information. I would like to thank our chief for participating in my churches. Every year, they have a day where they recognize first responders. And I was so proud and thankful that the Town of Herndon was represented. Because unfortunately, it was a busy time of year. It's around Christmas season. And I know it's hard for law enforcement to get a way to come to anything. But thank God, the Town of Herndon did. And everyone really appreciated the officer. They came. They showed him much love and everything and asked him to come back again and bring his family. So, I'm giving you that tidbit on behalf of Heritage Fellowship Church. And I'd like to invite all of you, one Sunday, if you'd like to, come on by. We'd love to have you. We have a 7:45 and a 10:45 service also. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else who would like to come down and speak? What are we going to do with these two? Ms. Glakas?
Barbara Glakas, 935 Barton Oaks Place. Since we have three minutes for a public comment, I'd like to yield my time to show the three-minute dementia video. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready for that? So, while we're clicking it on, if the, with the So, while we're clicking it on, with the concurrence of council, I should have mentioned this earlier, and Bessie's comments made me think of it. Our police department is out in the community all the time, and the chief told me this afternoon that tomorrow in The Washington Post, there's going to be an article featuring the Project Hope Code III initiative that the Herndon Police Department, along with, I think, Fairfax County Police, is participating in at Hutcheson Elementary, getting our police officers in to get to know the families and that sort of thing. So, watch The Washington Post tomorrow, I'm sure it'll be online as well, so I can't wait to see that. Did I stall long enough, Margie? Oh, I need to keep talking. They never tell me to keep talking. It's just buffering. Well, we may have to just watch it small. Look at Mr. Ashton going, IT's not my problem anymore. Well, he is here.
Um, what? I've forgotten. Should I?
Just go sit down.
Yeah. Right. Oh, that way. I don't want. I don't know. Could you please, I- My list. Can I go? I don't know quite what to do. Oh dear. Chicken cheese. What? Chicken cheese? Sorry. People with dementia have experiences like this every day. A little bit of understanding, tolerance, and patience can make all the difference.
I'll tell you what, if you go into the seats just there, when we get there, I'll call you, okay?
Okay, madam.
I can't get, I can't get on.
Let me help you. This way.
Thank you.
Can I look at that list?
Yes.
Chicken and cheese?
Oh.
Let's go this way.
Thank you. Find out how to become dementia-friendly. Contact Alzheimer's Society today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Glakis. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing, which is really easy since there are no public hearings? So, anything you'd like to bring to our attention, now's your chance. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. So, since there are no public hearings, we'll move straight to the general agenda this evening, and it's kind of a funny one, but it's very important. It's Ordinance 18003 to amend Chapter 74 Utilities, Article 4, Billing and Procedure, Section 74-425, Delinquencies and Leans, to update the town's address. We're not moving, don't worry, but we do have an update in our address, and I'll call on the town attorney for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town actually changed its mailing address in August of 2017 to eliminate the use of a P.O. box that had been used for a number of years in favor of having the mail directly delivered to this building, the municipal center, at 777 Lynn Street. A lot of outreach had been done to publicize that address change, but there is one place in the town code where that address appears, the old address appeared, and that is in the section of the code relative to billing procedures for water accounts, where a form has to be sent to the town that advises the town that a lesor, I'm sorry, a lessee has permission from an owner to lease a property. So, this is a very small change, but an important change to make sure that the correct address is there. And for our friends at home, the correct address for the town of Herndon is 777 Lynn Street, Herndon, Virginia, 20170. And this amendment will affect that change, and we would ask that you approve.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for the town attorney, Ms. Friedrichs, followed by Ms. Olem? Okay, are there any comments or anything? Okay, Ms. Olem?
Yes, just one. I know I spoke with some people that received late notices, because they had gone through their normal banking procedure and said, "Pay the town of Herndon," and it ended up late, and the town had sent them a bill. And we did talk about that as well in the work session. And they're not going to charge those fees. But make sure you do it for the next quarter, because they may not let us off next time.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
Okay, now I've lost it. Hold on a second. I am totally moving approval, though. I move approval of Ordinance 18-0-03 to amend Chapter 74, Article 4, Billing Procedure, Section 74-425.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Friedrich, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Discussion on the motion. No, I had to go into my bill-paying software and update the address as well, so I appreciate the town waiving those late fees for that first time, because it's growing pains, getting used to it. So, I guess if there is no further discussion, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. And that concludes most of our agenda this evening. We do have a need to go into a closed session, and so I will ask for a motion to go into a closed session under Section 2.23711A7, Code of Virginia, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding appointments to the auditing oversight committee and Section 2.23711A3, Code of Virginia.
Madam Mayor, we're deleting that second one.
We're deleting that second one. Oh, it's still in there. So, just to clarify, we will only be going into a closed session for Section 2.23711A7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding appointments for the auditing oversight committee. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Councilmember, Olem, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? So, we will take a very brief recess and meet in the conference room in about five minutes for a closed session. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Thanks for coming, guys.